Okay, welcome one, welcome all to our informal session. We got some good topics to talk about today. Our colleague, Dr. Ross Hammond, will not be joining us today. She is out of town, unofficial business. So, Mr. Dohany, we are ready to go.
Mr. Mayor, members of council. At this time, staff will come and present council a draft land acknowledgement statement. As council member recall, last year around October of last year, the council directed staff to work on a process to bring forward a draft land acknowledgement statement for council to review and consider. The next voice you'll hear will be Emily LeBeaus, who will kick off the presentation, and followed by key members of our subcommittee that worked to bring forward a draft for your consideration.
Welcome one, welcome all.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Thank you so much for having us. I'm Emily LeBeaus. I wanted to first recognize our distinguished guests. This is Chief Anderson of the Nansman Indian Nation, as well as his son Cameron Anderson that are joining us today. I'll introduce the other two later. But we're, it's very fitting that we're here in November to recognize this important project. November is Native American Heritage Month. It's a time for dedication to the honor of the history, culture, and contributions of the indigenous people, which you all are also doing at tonight's council meeting. The presentation offers an opportunity to share the thoughtful work that's been undertaken to create a meaningful land acknowledgement statement for Virginia Beach. This effort is part of a broader journey of reflection, reconciliation, recognition of the invaluable contributions indigenous people have made and continue to make to our city. Joining me today is the Chair of the Arts and Humanities Commission, Dr. Sin Romero, as well as the Chair of the Land Acknowledgement Subcommittee, Michael Cloud Butler, who have played integral roles in this process. Today, we'll provide background on the city council's resolution regarding the creation of the acknowledgement statement, explain the role of the Arts and Humanities Commission's Cultural Equity Committee and its Land Acknowledgement Subcommittee in this process. We'll share a brief history of the indigenous people connected to the land we are today, outline the steps taken to craft the draft, review the draft, and then share some examples of how other communities have used their land acknowledgement in public life. We understand this is the first time you're hearing this information, so we're not seeking guidance or decisions today, but instead, we aim to introduce you to the process and the draft statement. On October 3, 2023, City Council passed a resolution requesting the city manager to explore potential partnerships with indigenous tribes. And I'm happy to report there are many projects underway and to also to create a process to craft a land acknowledgement statement, which is today's presentation focus. Building on the Arts and Humanities Commission's Cultural Equity Committee's work in developing a cultural equity commitment with community stakeholders, this committee was identified as the appropriate body to guide the development of a land acknowledgement. A subcommittee was formed chaired by Michael Cloud Butler to lead this important work. Since March 2024, the subcommittee has engaged in a thoughtful, inclusive, and rigorous process to ensure the draft statement accurately reflects the history and continued significance of indigenous people in Virginia Beach. Now, I'll invite Michael to share more about the committee's efforts.
Thank you very much, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, and council. My name is Michael Cloud Butler. I've been a resident of the city of Virginia Beach since 1966, when I was just a teenage boy. And I've seen a lot of changes and I've seen a lot of growth. And I've witnessed the maturing of this city in many different ways. And this one, I will have to say, is probably the top level of the maturing of a city to recognize that it has a history, that there were people here before it, and we have been working on this and celebrating this for some time now. The role of the subcommittee, the Land Acknowledgement Statement Subcommittee, we exist under the banner of the Cultural Equity Committee and also under the banner of the Arts and Humanities Commission. All of those entities do very, very important work for the city of Virginia Beach, and it has come down to this particular statement here. And I am pleased to have been involved in this. This has been a very, very interesting and rewarding time. Now, the city of Virginia Beach has been in existence since 1963. However, many, many years, and I'll say centuries, before, people lived on this land. There are periods of time when those people who lived on this land had thriving communities and predating anything that happened in this city for several hundred years. So what I'd like to do is, on this pre-colonial to the post-colonial era, I would like to read some statements that we put together. Now, these are statements that have been researched very thoroughly, very fully. A lot of the indigenous people in this state have been talked to about this, and we want to make sure that any information that we have and that has been used to build this is available to any and all. Pre-colonial, indigenous tribes thrived in all regions of North America, and the coastal plains of the area now known as Virginia Beach were called the Chesapeake or Chesapeakeans. According to historic legend, Powhatan, who led a significant coalition of tribes throughout the mid-Atlantic, was told of a vision foretelling a threat from the east that would lead to an invasion massacre of the Chesapeake tribe. Many members of the tribe were killed or assimilated into the Powhatan Dominion. It is accepted that the Nansman Indian Nation then became stewards of these lands. Historians estimate that the indigenous population in what is now the United States ranged between eight to 112 million individuals prior to 1492. In the post-colonial era, tribes throughout Virginia traded and had various relationships with colonists, but were largely pushed off their lands as the colonies expanded. Some indigenous peoples fought in the Revolutionary War on both sides. Post-colonial policies increasingly oppressed indigenous communities, dismantling of traditional indigenous cultures. The Racial Integrity Act of 1924, which recognized only two races, white and colored, further suppressed indigenous identity. This oppression included residential schools, significant land seizures, and restriction on marriage, employment, and more. Population estimates declined to six million by the year 1650. Coming into the modern era, a brief history of today. Cities, institutions, and individuals are making a difference in addressing and reconciling the negative actions, mindsets, and impacts of the past. Through collaborative resolutions, formal acknowledgements, partnerships, and expanded platforms for education and visibility, meaningful progress is underway across our state and others. Land has been returned to indigenous communities, and new health, welfare, and funding initiatives are being launched. In Virginia, the Nansman Indian Nation has reclaimed lands in Suffolk, now open to the public for education and cultural experiences. They have also developed a healthcare network tailored to indigenous communities' unique needs and are engaged in a partnership to create affordable housing, mixed-use infrastructure. Additionally, they are revitalizing their traditions through powwows, traveling education programs, and environmental stewardship projects, such as restoring the freshwater oyster population in collaboration with local nonprofit organizations. According to the 2020 census, there are approximately 2 million Native Americans in the U.S., along with 4 to 6 million people of mixed Native heritage. Accurate data remains challenging due to historic laws and stigmas that often prevented individuals from identifying as indigenous on official documents. More than half of the Native American population lives in just five states, while the remainder is dispersed across the country and often far from ancestral lands, such as myself. I'm actually from the state of Wisconsin, where my mother and father are from. The crafting of the statement is going to be explained in part and in some depth by Dr. Cynthia Romero, and so I will step aside while Dr. Romero does that part of the presentation. Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, and members of the city council. Again, it is a great pleasure for me to be serving as Chair of the Arts and Humanities Commission and to be a part of the Subcommittee of the Land Acknowledgement, which is really being led by our Cultural Equity Committee of the Arts and Humanities Commission. And just want to reassure you as the city council that this Subcommittee approached its process in establishing and crafting the land acknowledgement statement in a very intentional, very informative, and very diligent fashion, truly being culturally humble and appreciating all aspects of the indigenous people. And again, with the leadership of Commissioner Michael Cloud Butler and with the assistance, particularly of Chief Anderson, the committee members and Subcommittee members really had an opportunity to learn so much more, particularly about the very precious culture that the indigenous people are trying to preserve. So for this land acknowledgement process to be part of that, I think everyone on the Subcommittee feels incredibly blessed to have been part of the process. So one of the first steps was to do some diligent research related to the recognized tribes from across the country that happen to be here residing in Virginia. And we are grateful that there is a website that has all of those recognized tribes listed, and we were able to learn about their histories. So we were able to reach out through formal mailings, as well as emails and phone calls, to engage the leadership that were listed through the website listings of each of those tribes. We also had multiple discussions almost every three to four weeks since March of 2024 to learn about all the tribes, their history, and particularly looking at and reviewing examples of land acknowledgements that have already taken place and already been developed across the country. And through all of those conversations, as we were reviewing information, learning about our own indigenous tribes right here in Virginia and Virginia Beach, there was significant amounts of processing and thoughtfulness to be able to develop the statement that you will be seeing here shortly. Next slide. Again, on this slide, you'll see the members of the Arts and Humanities Commission that served on the Subcommittee, and we are joined by our Chair of our Cultural Equity Committee, who also served as a member of this Subcommittee, Olga Torres Baker. And we know that Mark Johnson is probably live streaming. And we also have Hunter Thomas, Commissioner Thomas, who is here also, a member of the Subcommittee. In addition, with the formal invitations that were offered to all the tribes who were listed, all 11 tribes who were listed on the Virginia website, we are grateful that all of those who were listed as participants chose to engage in at least one conversation in person or virtually, and multiple of them actually served during several of the meetings. We are particularly grateful that the chiefs, vice chiefs, and the administrative leaders, the tribal administrative leaders, were involved and engaged. And again, many of them deferred conversation and decisions to Chief Anderson, knowing his leadership in this space. We're also grateful in particular to be able to mention the other tribes who are recognized here in Virginia in the spirit of Native American Heritage Month. So we were connected with and invited Chickahominy, the Cheranhaka Notaway, Eastern Chickahominy, the Mataponai, the Monakan, Notaway, of course, Nansman, Pamunki, Patawomek, Rappa Hanuk, the Upper Mataponai, the Ojibwe, Anish Inabey, that's Michael's, and Lenape, all the tribes who were in outreach to and invited to participate. And again, we were so grateful, in particular to our staff who helped us in very supportive administrative ways, Hillary Plait, who is our Public Relations and Partners Manager within the Cultural Affairs Department. So again, incredibly grateful to have been part of this process and available to answer questions at the appropriate time. So now I will turn it back to Michael to be able to read the draft city Virginia Beach land acknowledgement. Michael, thank you.
This particular land acknowledgement statement, as we've been told by staff, is intended to be read by a non-indigenous person because the acknowledgement, of course, is to the indigenous community. This particular statement has been crafted and recrafted, worded and reworded several times at some of our meetings, and we feel that this particular statement that we have for you is the best that we could do. And I hope that there is some meaning within this statement that strikes a chord within you. And we look forward to helping to disseminate it at a later date if need be. Okay, this is a draft of the Virginia Beach City Land Acknowledgement. "We, the city of Virginia Beach, acknowledge that the present-day land on which the city exists is situated on lands that have been inhabited by indigenous peoples since time immemorial. The Chesapeake Indians inhabited two thriving communities known as Apesus and Chesapeakea, the latter meaning 'country on a great river' in Algonquin, the native language spoken by many tribes of the coastal plain. Their bloodlines continue today in the Nansman Indian Nation and by extension, all Virginia tribes. We acknowledge their rich traditions and the systematic erasure of their culture spanning 400 years since the colonization of America. These tribes continue to inhabit and steward these lands through the reclamation and preservation of their traditions, culture, and economic and ecological impact efforts. They are an integral part of our communities, past, present, and future. By recognizing and acknowledging the past and present, it is our intention to inspire meaningful engagement in a reconnection with and a revival of the rich culture of the indigenous peoples of our city and state, to create a legacy of healing and cultural preservation for future generations. We call on ourselves and our community to seek opportunities and embrace actions that demonstrate a love and respect for this land and which cultivate a spirit of reconciliation with the indigenous peoples who continue to live and work within our shared community." Thank you.
Today's presentation is intended to introduce you to the draft and the process behind its creation. We're not seeking immediate feedback or direction, but wanted to give you some time and opportunity to review and reflect on the information. Staff can follow up in the new year. But we also wanted to share with you some other ways that the other communities have used statements. Some cities display their statement in public places, on the city's website, and introduce indigenous history online. Some cities recite the full or condensed statements at significant city-sponsored events. So that concludes our presentation. I wanted to thank everyone involved for all your efforts. And truly thank you, Chief Anderson and Cameron for being here and all your work with us.
Thank you, Ms. Emily, and guests for the presentation. One of the things that come to mind is with the 1924 Racial Integrity Act, and I've been able to work with you, Emily, in your department, to bring forth some archived records of my family history. For those of us that are from Virginia Beach, how do people that have Native American heritage but were here reach out? Because when they did the 1924 Act, and it was only white and colored, for instance, my great-great-grandmother, she was the first colored person to work at the Francis Land House, but she was actually, her mom was fully full-blooded Indian. And so in having conversations, I've actually had people tell me there were no black-footed Indians, yet we have records that they were on the Chesapeake, but it was glebe land, which came from the church. So once it transferred over to the church, many blacks or colored people in Princeess Anne County were given glebe land because they worked for the prominent families. And so, for instance, my family was on the Little Neck Peninsula, which was glebe land of the church, but it's now Middle Plantation, very expensive. Seabreeze Farms in King's Grant, where my kids go to school. So we're still on the land that our family had, yet we don't know a specific tribe because by 1924, much of that history had been erased. They were just called colored. And in an article that I shared with Emily in Cultural Affairs, she was, in 1974, at her 109th birthday party, the family said she was the most faithful, loyal, and honest servant they had ever had and the first colored person. So how do those people that are from here, have history here, but they may not be affiliated with a specific tribe, how do they get more information on how to participate in a project like this? Because there are many of us out here. Question maybe for the chief.
Can you go up to the podium, please? Don't worry about it, you're gonna be up till you die. I've got a broken nose, so for football, so. Well, to address your, one of the biggest things to note, especially if you consider Bag Bay, they were tribes from Virginia and North Carolina that came across a lot, especially in the areas you're talking about. So not just with the Nansmans, I would definitely research the Mahren and the Hara Wa Saponi. You know, with native persons, we didn't really have maps or utilize maps. It's differentiation between boundaries. Our boundaries were rivers, creeks, plateaus. So in addition to our tribe, I definitely would investigate the Mahren and the Hara Wa as well. And that'd definitely help with you to help look at some connections that may be out there.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, Michael and then Jennifer.
Thanks to all of you for what I know is very diligent, comprehensive, and I think outstanding work on this project. I have a few comments and then a couple of questions about kind of next steps and how to move forward. The first comment that I have is just a reflection as a person who was educated in Virginia Beach Public Schools, which I uphold as one of, if not the finest, public school system in the country. I consider myself very fortunate to have attended and graduated from Virginia Beach Public Schools. So I mean no disrespect to my former teachers or to the curriculum when I share this. My memory of talking about native civilizations in our region and in America is that they were here, colonists came, they were gone. That's kind of what we were taught. That ring a bell to anyone else? But native people are not gone and continue to live among us. And I don't think that history is told as comprehensively or as directly as it should be. And I think we're making those corrections now, and a statement like this and the process that is underway here is part of telling that story, but it's more than part of telling the story and telling history. It's part of recognizing the historical and present contributions that native people make in our community every single day. And one of the most important things that we can do here as council members, as elected representatives of the people of our great city, is to ensure that each and every person in our community sees themselves and is reflected in the work that occurs here at City Hall and all throughout our city. And I think this is an important initiative in that broader, comprehensive goal. So I'm excited about it. I can tell this very serious work has been invested into this, and I thank you and all of the people you worked with for investing your expertise, your talent, and your experiences into drafting a statement and helping to create policy that ensures that every person is represented here at city government, your culture, every person. That's really good, right? My question, though, on the operational side is, what are a... Well, let me take a step back, and I have a question for the city attorney. Are there any reasons to be concerned that a statement like this, if adopted, would have legal ramifications that we may not have intended?
Very hard to answer that question in the abstract. I believe that it has been worded very carefully so as to not entail those kinds of risks, but those kind of risks always exist at least to some degree. I don't believe there's anything specific in here that creates a legal obligation on the part of the city of Virginia Beach. It does speak in terms of the systematic erasure of the Native American culture, and it does make a number of admissions regarding the actions of all of our ancestors, which could give rise to some moral obligation, but I don't believe it specifically addresses any legal obligation.
Thank you. And I think the, and I'll, I'll just speak based on, so I think the legal questions is separate and apart from the moral questions and the historical questions, but, you know, in keeping with what I just noted, there has been an erasure of native culture in America and across this region. I've learned that from working with indigenous communities here. There has been an erasure, including the types of information that we were taught when we were growing up, that was part of an erasure. Was it intentional or, you know, or brutal in the way that it was generations before? No, but it was a erasure nonetheless. So I think, based on my reading, there's factual correctness in the statement that's presented here. I do think it's important to understand whether or not there are corresponding legal obligations. What I'm hearing from you say is that there's not.
There are no overt legal obligations contained in the language that I can see.
Thank you. And then, question for the committee, could be from Ms. LeBeaus or anyone else in the committee if you'd like to answer. How have you seen best practices in terms of, A, an adoption of a statement such as this, than how it's used? In other words, what, I mean, you noted some, but I'm more curious if you could be more precise, how would you recommend it be adopted in the city of Virginia Beach? You gave us options, but I'm curious...
I need you to have the microphone.
Yes, I'll certainly invite Michael to...
Yes, I'll certainly invite Michael to come up as well. So again, we are so grateful that Hillary was able to go to a national conference where she heard about a lot of the different options, and it has varied from community to community. There have been some where every public official will have a very succinct statement to read in front of, you know, or before every public commentary that they provide. There have been others, as Emily had posted, where it's displayed prominently on a website, in public buildings, et cetera. So it really is up to the city as to what the priority could be. I think the idea, Councilwoman Berluci, that you were bringing up, that this is really a culture shift in many ways because of that disappearance or the decline in the numbers. And again, one thing that the subcommittee really recognized is that those that we reached out to and those who participated in the process from all the different tribes that are here, and especially with Chief Anderson, is they're dedicated, just like any other community is, to preserve their community. So any way that we can continue to think of the best ways to recognize this land that we are oftentimes taken advantage of, how do we showcase that we acknowledge the land that we are occupying and the history of the people who lived here for much longer than we've been here?
Thank you. Mayor, I have one more comment and then one last question, and then I'll be happy to move on. But I think, I think that's, sorry, I forgot what the comment was, but that's probably a good thing. Could you be more, so I have a question for the Chief Anderson, if you wouldn't mind going to the podium, because you'll need to speak at the mic. Could you tell us a little bit more about when the Nansman Indian Nation was referenced at the beginning of the presentation? Ms. LaBeau's talked about what she called reclamation of lands. What exactly is that? What, could you tell me more about what that means? What is a reclamation?
Well, initially, we, it was determined, like during John Smith's time, that where where our current government seat is, Manonot Town, that was one of our primary villages. And over the years, since the 1600s, we lost those lands. They were turned over to Suffolk. And then as of May 15th of last year, Suffolk gave the tribe full deed entitle. But again, historically, there were four primary villages along the Nansman River, and Manonot Town was one of the four prominent ones. So it was a true reclamation for us.
You worked with the Suffolk City Government to arrange that transfer?
Yeah, yes, with the city of Suffolk, and also with some partners like Ducks Unlimited and some of the environmental organizations throughout the country. They were phenomenal supporters with us to reattain those lands.
Thank you.
Hey, Jennifer?
Thank you, man. And excited to see this come this far to fruition. So I was gonna shout out the Halaasaponi, but you already did it, so I appreciate that. So my family, my mother's side descends from the Richardson's, from the Halaasaponi, so in North Carolina. And I know that there's an effort there for powwows and these things to preserve the culture, and this is a whole nother level, when there's not only within groups, cultural preservation, but then for the broader public and for power structures like governments to recognize it too. So a lot of this, we're speaking about erasure, but it's also visibility and now making visible and raising consciousness about some of these histories. And I first became in tune with it in Virginia Beach from a colleague at TCC, who was doing her own research into the presence of native and indigenous symbolism in Virginia Beach, but the absence of people. So whether it's mascots or the names of rivers and the names of roads and streets, like we see that there's evidence, but then we don't really know the history or see the people who are still here and contributing and preserving it. So I appreciate how far this has come from concept to now we have a draft statement. And I look forward to seeing how, as a city, we determine how to bring this more to the public. So thank you for your efforts. Thank you for your work.
Okay, work.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Thank you all for the presentation and for your work on this. I just want to make a comment that there's another committee of Virginia VB 250, which celebrates the anniversary of the country, 2026, 250th anniversary, that indigenous tribes and culture and experience is a part of that committee and that commission, and some members of the indigenous community is a part of that. So that's related to your work, so thank you.
Okay, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. I remember what I was gonna say. But I think, I do think it's important, it's worth noting, you know, Mr. Taylor referenced that, you know, he knows he has Native American heritage, but doesn't know, wasn't, wasn't connected to a tribe, I didn't have a tribal affiliation or a present tribal affiliation. And I think that's true for many people. Anyone who's done a DNA test, you know, many, many DNA tests return and they show that there is Native American or indigenous heritage in virtually all of us. And so I don't think we should be fearful of an acknowledgement. I think, you know, some communities are more trepidatious than others. I think acknowledging the heritage that lives within us and in our communities is a symbol of strength and connectedness and awareness. And I think it's really important because while we're so fortunate to have Chief Anderson and his son and Michael Butler, who we know so well from his many contributions, there is heritage that lives within each of us virtually. And I think it's really important that we recognize that and even celebrate it.
Chris? Mayor Dyer, we recently saw Dr. Ralph Hammond invest some money into acknowledging the historically black communities in Virginia Beach. And for some of us natives, I say my mom's side, my dad's side, I was born in Sea-Tac. And so they came together because coloreds couldn't marry white people and white people couldn't be with colored people. It's interesting, I'm looking at District 8, and Michael says, what else can we do? In my district, I have Chesapeake Colony, very affluent neighborhood. I just said that the Little Neck Peninsula is now Seabreeze Farms, Middle Plantation, the Great Neck Bridge that connects Great Neck Road to Shore Drive, that was one of the largest Chesapeake Indian villages. And so I don't know if signs everywhere would work, but we know for a fact, as Councilmember Ralph said, Chesapeake Colony didn't come from, the name from, you know, Irish heritage. And so is there something maybe you all can look at as, or the areas that we know and we have the history, maybe markers? Because that would mean a lot for those that understand the relationship and the names, because that would go a long way. So we've just done it for the African-American communities. Maybe it could be done if this council or the next council thought to put some money towards that. And it would be factual, and maybe that will educate our youth, because outside of teaching my children, the schools are not necessarily teaching this part of Virginia Beach history or our national history. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a very excellent point, Chris. Anybody else at this point? Let me say thank you very much for coming. You know, certainly Virginia Beach has not been exempt from some of the dark sides of history, you know, along many, many generations. But I can say one thing about Virginia Beach that I do think is a point of pride. I think we're one of the few cities that have a human rights commission that meets frequently. And Michael and I've been involved with them, and they're comprised of a beautiful mosaic that represents the, you know, the broad influence of so many, you know, different folks in, in the city. And over the years that I've worked with them since 2004, we've tackled some very, you know, sensitive issues. But the thing is, we're not afraid to confront them. You can't fix a problem until you identify the problem and be having those honest discussions among many people. So, you know, the thing is, you know, Virginia Beach is a very special city that, you know, we have a point of pride with. You know, we have so many good people like yourselves that come forward and do so many good things. And, but once again, I think this is a good thing and, you know, thank you for helping take Virginia Beach to the next level. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Can you preface one thing?
Yes, sir.
One of the greatest things, a lot of times when you look at activities like this, a lot of people say, well, we're extending ourselves, taking on another mission. But one of the biggest things is we want to really educate the public about is that now with the tribe becoming a federal entity, we're a sovereign nation within this nation, we can help all communities, not just our community, with federal funding, grants and those type of things. So again, it's not just a one-way street, especially now. We can do so much, and it would be great to talk to some of your other departments and share those goals and visions moving forward.
And, you know, I think that's the spirit that makes Virginia Beach such a wonderful city. It's the people like yourself that get involved. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Are we talking about this today?
No.
Okay, so we just keep it.
It's on Thursday.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, moving on.
All right, so Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, following a briefing that staff provided to the council towards the end of summer, staff is gonna come and update council on the Violet Bank Trail project and also seek your guidance as it relates to how council would like us to proceed with the project.
Okay, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. As the presentation's being loaded, we're here this afternoon to talk to you about a project that has been underway for a little while, has a little bit of issue around it. And so City Council had asked us to go back and look at it some more, and we're bringing back to you today what we have found as we were out. And the reason that we're here this afternoon is two citizen information meetings revealed what we have heard from the community, and that is that there is divided opinion about the need and necessity of this project. Some are desiring to have the connection that exists through this community, and some are concerned about impacts to trees and how it might impact the community. So when last we met, we were asked to look at what ADA compliant solutions existed, what some of our other options were as far as trails, and how that might impact us. That was earlier this summer. So what follows is a summary of costs, funding, and project implications for different trail options. Just as a reminder, the Violet Bank Trail is located in Bellamy Manor in the area along the Violet, at the conclusion of Violet Bank, there is a drainage way that extends to Bellamy Manor Estates, and it follows along that area. The original project, the details for the original project were intended to connect to Selwood Drive along what is currently an unpaved footpath. The original scope for the project was to create a 10-foot shared-use path and to improve the drainage ditch along that same alignment. Street crossings, sidewalks, and all ADA ramps would have been in place. What we initially heard from the community was concern over impacts to trees, and so what we did as a result of those initial concerns was to remove the drainage element, because that has the greatest impact to trees. So the drainage impact is no longer in this part of the scope. However, there is a project that still needs to be completed. That project is scheduled for 2029. The purpose and need, however, still remain the same, that is to improve pedestrian safety, accessibility at Providence Elementary, Kempstville Middle and High Schools, the Kempstville Library, and the Recreation Center. TAP funding has been secured, about $318,000, $319,000. Total project is 1.6 million. Our current design is an eight-foot-wide asphalt sidewalk design, and that design is about 90% complete at this point. And our anticipated advertisement for construction would be late in 2025 or early in 2026. And as I mentioned, ditch maintenance was originally scheduled for 2029. A little bit about the ditch. Again, this is not part of this project, but it is worth noting that this ditch does have some issues today. It's heavily overgrown, you can see from the picture here, there's trees, debris. Inadequate flow along the ditch does result in flooding complaints for the community. There's some utilities in the ditch boundaries. Underneath the ditch, there is a gas line, and I believe there's also some communications lines that we have to contend with. We're currently scoping the design work for what it would take to address that ditch. So we have not progressed very far into that. We're anticipating coordinating public meetings as a result of this, of this ditch maintenance work. That's not something we normally do with ditch maintenance, but given the concerns of the community, we do anticipate reaching out and letting everybody have an understanding of what we're doing. As a result of that community information and the community outreach, we're anticipating the design is gonna take longer than it normally would. So while we expect it to start in early 2025, it probably will not complete till early 2026. Construction could be awarded as early as the completion of the design, and again, that would probably take place around 2026. As I mentioned, our current schedule shows it being in 2029, but if we were desirous to accelerate that work, we could probably do it in 2026. So again, council asked us to look at what it took to build a trail or sidewalk, what the options are, what constitutes a trail and a sidewalk. There's been a lot of conversation about what the potentials could be here. And this chart is really intended to help understand and illustrate how the different levels of government see trails and pedestrian facilities. At the top, we have the US government, and that's based predominantly upon the Americans with Disability Act. You can see that the surfaces should be stable, firm, and slip-resistant. It doesn't say it has to be concrete, doesn't say it has to be asphalt, but that is the, that is the minimum requirement, that it's stable, firm, and slip-resistant. Now, the minimum width allowed by the ADA is three foot, but if you construct something at three foot, every 200 foot, you have to have a passing zone, and that passing zone has to be at a minimum five feet wide, five feet long. So even if it's a three-foot trail, every 200 feet, you still have to take a clear spot, or 200 feet or less, you still have to create a clear spot. The city standards, we differentiate between sidewalks, wide sidewalks and shared-use paths, and you can see on the chart the differences, five foot, eight foot, and 10 foot as the distances, and some illustration of what the appropriate surfaces could be. And then if you look at the state level, the Virginia Department of Transportation identifies the requirements for a sidewalk or a shared-use path. Other questions that were raised led us to try to have some understanding of what the trail options and what the considerations would be if we decided to do different elements. And you could see that the top line is no build. And if you look at the asterisk on the, on the no build at the bottom, you see that no build doesn't mean no build forever. It could mean that we wait until the completion of the ditch maintenance and then go back and look at creating a ditch along, or excuse me, a path along the boundary of the ditch at that time. But if we do a no build, leave as it is, we would not be required to make it ADA compliant because we're not touching it. There's not a project, therefore, we're not touching it, we're not required to make it ADA compliant. It could stay dirt in its current condition, and again, we could do something like that. The column on the right illustrates some of the implications for doing that. We would have to return the TAP $318,000, $319,000. We would have a 50-point deduction on future TAP submittals. I should point out that we currently have a 40-point TAP deduction as a result of some tardiness on previous, delivering previous projects. So I want to be fully open, let everybody understand that we do have a 40-point handicap at this point. If we were to return that funds, it would add another 50 points to that. Another option would be to create a three-foot wide, which does meet the minimum ADA requirements. We could look at a couple of different surfaces, and I'm gonna present a slide here in just a moment, talking about some of those different surfaces. In order to construct that, though, we would still need to create about an eight-foot wide path for tree clearing. And that's just because in reality, to construct the path, even three-foot wide, with the different types of material that it would be required to create a firm, stable surface, it would require enough it would require enough room to be able to get in small pieces of equipment. And in order to do that, it would still require an eight-foot clearance. If we look at the implications on the right, again, we would have to return the TAP because it doesn't meet the Virginia Department of Transportation standards for what would satisfy their need. So we would incur the 50-point deduction and we would have to go back and redesign. We would still, I didn't cover the last two columns on the chart, and I probably should have done so. Temporary construction easements. That column refers to the fact that in order to remove trees, some of the trees extend, the roots extend onto private property, we would need to get access to some private property. So it would be a temporary construction easement. We would need City Council to authorize us to be able to do so, either through purchase or condemnation. And then the last column would require, is the ordinance that would require that. And going back to the five-foot option, a five-foot option could be done. You could, again, for surface materials, you could use a couple of different ones. And again, I'll come back to what those different options are. Tree clearing would be eight to 10 feet. It would take about 72 trees to be removed. That's kind of the baseline that we identified. It would take about 72 trees to construct this trail. Ditch maintenance would be adversely impacted in the future or would affect the trail in the future, that is to say. Temporary construction easements would be required. And again, looking at the implications, there would be no impact to TAP funding. The project scope, well, let me back that up a little bit. We don't anticipate an impact to TAP funding. And the reason I have to say that is because a five-foot trail does meet the Department of Transportation's standards, but we'd have to go back to the Department of Transportation and ask them to re-scope the project. It's potential that they could say, we're so far advanced into this project that they could deny us. That could be a potential problem. But it wouldn't be just us surrendering the TAP money and turning it over. Project scope change approval would be required, as I just pointed. And we would have to maintain VDOT project schedule of construction. And we had told them that we would advertise by August of next year. However, it would require some redesign work. And the eight-foot wide option, that it pretty much opens us up to the surface material of hot mixed asphalt, that would be probably the most appropriate solution there. And about 72 trees, again, would still need to be removed. We don't anticipate that it would cause issues as it relates to ditch maintenance in the future, and that's largely because of the nature of the material that we would be putting down. We would still have impacts to the projects, the neighboring projects. There would be no impact to TAP funding. And we believe that we could make that construction advertisement date. Before we move forward, I thought it important to help council to understand what the no build option would look like. And this is essentially leaving it the way that it is, and this is how it looks out there today. You can see that it's a path that people have walked on and basically prohibited the vegetation from growing by walking on it. There are routes which make it impassable for some users to be able to use. There are obstacles for people with limited mobility to walk over. You have encroachment by bushes and branches and that type of thing. So you get spiders on you in the fall, I would imagine. It is an unimproved path. I mentioned that there were several different choices of surface material. I'll try not to dwell on them too long. They're organized from the top to the bottom in order of rank. And that rank has to do a lot, in large part, with the amount that it costs us to not only construct it, but to maintain it. So I'll read the first one so that you have an understanding. The first one is hot mixed asphalt. We judge that to be the lowest overall cost. And the reason for that is although it costs about $100,000 for installation, it would require about $89,000 over the course of 25 years to maintain it. So when you add the two together, you get 189,375. That's installation plus the first 25 years of maintenance. That's kind of our baseline. Now, every cost that's provided here is based upon a five-foot width. That's just so that we maintained equality between the different surfaces. Of course, they could be narrower or wider. Now, hot mixed asphalt, we couldn't put down in a three-foot, as I showed you before on the previous slide. But nevertheless, this is just to allow us to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples. Color chip seal, also a very durable surface. It is more expensive to put down. It is more expensive to maintain. In the long haul, however, it is the second best choice over the cost of 25 years or over the time of 25 years. It's about $23,000 more during that duration. As we start to move down, I wanted to point out that there's a couple of, the fourth one down, number one, stone dust. And you can see it has a very low cost. But if you look at the total maintenance cost, and the reason for that is it's not a very durable material. As it rains, the dust will get washed away, it'll rill. And in order to maintain ADA compliance, it's going to require yearly maintenance with staff to go out and maintain that, and that adds up. And so again, when you look at the overall 25-year costs, some of these ones that although initial costs are quite low, the cost of maintenance throughout the project keeps the costs very high, makes them less desirable. So the project options that staff identified would be to, one, leave the trail as it is. As a result, we would have to return TAP funding to the state, receive the 50-point deduction. City-funded trail could be constructed after the completion of the ditch maintenance. It's identified as 2029 here, but again, it could be accelerated as early as 2026 or 2027. We could construct a three-foot option. We wouldn't be able to do it with all of the different surface types, but we could construct a three-foot option. We would have to return the TAP funding to the state. Again, we would still incur that 50-point deduction on future applications. It would require a redesign, which would impact budgets and schedule. We would have to get a design variance from ourselves. It's doable. And city-funded trail could be constructed. We could change the design to a five-foot option. It would still require a redesign, which would impact budget and schedule. And we would have to go back to VDOT and request a scope change, again, which is not guaranteed. And then the fourth option is the eight-foot wide asphalt, which is currently what is in design. We could continue that design and progress forward. So we made a little chart here so that we could help to illustrate how it all kind of breaks out. But basically along the top, you have the leave the trail as it is, a three-foot wide trail, a five-foot wide trail and an eight-foot wide trail. And along the left-hand side, you know, the pros and cons. So again, leaving the trail as it is, gets a gray box because it's not ADA compliant, but it's also not required to be ADA compliant. So we kind of just grade that one out. The three-foot wide, the five-foot wide, the eight-foot wide, though, all could be made to be ADA compliant. Redesign required, would not be required if we leave the trail as it is, nor if we go forward with the eight-foot wide trail. Return to TAP funds. You can see that we're quite positive that it would impact us as if we leave the trail the way that it is or go with a three-foot trail, five-foot trail. We're saying it doesn't impact us. We think we can get it through VDOT, but maybe that could be orange. And then the eight-foot trail, we know we don't have an issue with. And again, going down through the matrix, I think council can understand where we're trying to go with that. And when we take our findings out of that matrix, where we currently stand and where we are, the project scope, after reviewing all the options and keeping consistent with the original scoping requirements, would be to leave the trail in its current design as an eight-foot wide trail. Trail surface material to be number six, mixed asphalt, which is the most durable. And the rationale behind that is because the design is almost complete. We're at 90%, would not force us to go back and do a redesign. It is completely ADA compliant. It satisfies the TAP requirements. It has the highest functionality, serves all users with ample room for passing. The eight-foot trail requires removal of the same number of trees as the five-foot trail. So in case there's some question why we would opt for the eight-foot as opposed to the five-foot, which is 72 trees. And it has the lowest long-term maintenance cost, that 25-year cost overall. And so at this point, next steps of where staff is proposing to go forward, an ordinance authorizing acquisition of permanent and temporary easements, either by agreement or condemnation, would be scheduled for your December 3rd. A public hearing would be scheduled for your December 3rd meeting. And an ordinance proposed for December 10th. Conjointly with the December 10th ordinance for acquisition of permanent temporary easements, we would also ask to create, we would need to create acquisition private utility adjustment phases in this CIP project. And at that, I welcome any questions.
Can we get through a potential win-win on this?
Can you go back to that one with the colors? So that's where my brain is after this thing, after all we've been through with this. I said last time I held up the two packets of paper and they were about equal. So I'm going to take a page from Councilman Berluci's thing, and I'm going to make a couple of statements. And then I'll ask a couple of questions and try to get us to a point to where we are as I've talked to just about everybody here about where we are with this and where y'all's heads are. So I'm going to get started. Thank you for doing this also. This was really good. Appreciate the presentation. So I think you identified, and I'm sorry, I got to go through my little chart. It looks a lot like yours without the colors. The cost of the work, that part has been identified. The one thing that I do want to clarify is that, and I've said this before, is that we've had a lot of grants discussion. I've had it with a lot of the individuals. And when I say a lot, I mean, I'm well up over 25 folks have talked to me about it where they were under the impression that the grant was going to pay for it all. And they, most, 90% of them were not in support once they found out that the grant wasn't paying it, but there were some that were. So I'm just trying to keep it, I'm doing what's impossible. I'm going to try to talk to both sides here of people that I would consider my friends that are going to be one happy and one not, you know, at the end of this. So I think a lot of people would suggest that I didn't do it this way, but hey, this is what I'm doing. So but in the beginning, the grant would have paid for more, but now it's gone up in cost. So that has also been part of the issue, right? We are now probably at $2 million instead of 1.6. Is that a fair statement? It's all right if it's not. I'm just asking the question.
We don't know that it's there yet. It is fair to say that the costs have gone up.
But that's all right. I just want to be transparent and as 100% accurate as I can be. So I took care of the grant part. Then for back in a little bit of history, and like you spoke to, that we have done the the community engagements and that part of them, it sounds like in the past, and Ms. Ross Hammond's not here, and through Jessica Abbott and through Rocky, and to me, there's been a lot of back and forth on this. But the last one that I'm aware of, and LJ, you and I discussed it, how it was 48% against, 48% for and 4% undecided. Is that, that's a pretty fair statement, right? I'm not saying it couldn't have changed. We have other ones now that, you know, showing different things. But that's where we were. The one thing that I'm saying for this body that I want y'all to hear is is that if I heard you correctly, if we did move, we did not move forward with the trail, the flood maintenance could be addressed as early as 26, not 29.
Yes, sir. That is
Possible.
That is possible. That's based upon how long it takes us to do the design. And we do want to engage with the community.
And I'm going to ask you something here, LJ, and I understand totally if you can't answer it. But one of the concerns about doing the flood mitigation by some of those in the gallery is that we're going to take out in excess of 300 trees. Don't hold me, that's not empirical, but somewhere around 300 trees. My statement is that some of the folks don't even realize that the west side of this trail is flooding, that we've had one individual has lost a car. It's been in the garages of at least three of the folks down there, and that we have to do something for that. My question for you is, does that automatically mean we got to take out 300 trails? Or can we dig a pond at the end of this that would hold it? You know what I mean?
Yes, sir. And again, that's why we want to reach out to the community on this. I do think that there's value in having that discussion with the community and having a more wide open discussion than we would normally have for maintenance of a ditch. There are potentially things we could do to try and minimize the tree removal. And there are, but ultimately, at the end of the day, it has to be able to convey the amount of water that has to go down the ditch.
Right, because that is the part that I've learned from you working on other projects now, is that is the way the water is going to flow. It's what it's intended to do to ultimately get to Indian Lakes. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that has to happen.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, bear with me, y'all. I'm going to get through this. Okay, so will the, well, when the stormwater work begins, whatever that is ultimately going to look like, how much damage to the trail is going to be incurred? I know, again, I'm asking you hypothetically.
I can't answer that question, sir, because it really does depend upon what we wind up doing with the ditch. And then, of course, if council wanted to tell us to do a three-foot trail versus a five-foot trail, this type of material, that type of material. But assuming that we stayed with what we're currently proposing, the eight-foot trail, hot mixed asphalt, we believe it's a limited damage to the existing trail.
Okay.
There will be some, but we believe it to be limited.
But if we theoretically, if we went down in size to the five-foot, there would be less damage to the trail?
Not necessarily. And the reason is because it depends upon,
I hear you.
We can't use hot mixed asphalt. And that's the difference, right? Hot mixed asphalt allows us to put some measure of equipment on it. Once we lose that material, then that means that we don't have the ability to put the same types of equipment on it. And if we're running equipment and running across the trail.
You're talking about when you go to do the flood mitigation, it would be part of the work process, and that's why the eight-foot would cover
Potentially, yes, sir.
Not necessarily, not absolutely, but potential.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Okay. So then that would become to my final two parts here. Well, I definitely want to give it some consideration and some discussion between the five and the eight. We may have already taken care of that if that's the way this goes, but that part is for sure. The one thing I would like to say, and I don't always want to mention about the fire department and everything else, but one of the things that I see that was unintentionally and that's something that we can use moving forward, that I think is of the utmost importance, is when we see this kind of storm clouds coming, that we make it almost an ultimatum that the two groups in the city and even an arbitrator needs to come together to work out a plan that can be, because this has come down to all or nothing. And with a grant involved, and I do got one more question about the grant now that I think about it. Because now this has come down to, one of these groups is going to be completely upside down about the way it's going to go. Whereas I'm not saying, this is not you, LJ, I'm talking about a process here. My wife will be proud of me, content versus process. But is that we should be trying to figure this out. We are that good as a city and to be able to put this together. This has been going on a long time. And I just feel that that would have come to a better conclusion here. But that's water under the bridge. So my last question is, 50 points sounds like a lot if you're talking about out of 100. If you're talking about out of a million, 50 points is absolutely nothing. So where does 50 points fall? When does the 40 points fall off? How does that play?
I don't have all those answers for you right now. Can I get that information back to you? I will say that 50 points
Important right now, buddy.
50 points is significant, sir.
Yeah, okay.
And 90 points is more significant.
Yeah, okay, that's, yeah, and if you need
I'm getting pantomiming from my staff, saying it's out of 250 points.
Oh, okay, so that's So that's, so speaking for Dave, Dave, that's pretty, that's a pretty large amount is what we're saying.
And we have four.
And we have four. When does the 40 fall off? Give him a.
Five years.
Five years?
It's already been on the line.
Bankrupt.
Four more years.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's important.
Okay, Jennifer, then Josh.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm trying to wrap my mind around it all. So are you, so my question is about the grant application. So to kind of get it, if you can answer this, from the beginning, there would have been a problem statement or a needs assessment which would have motivated you to apply for the grant to say, give us funding so we can address this issue or address this need. So what was the need? Like what was the problem that therefore we applied for this grant to get funding to do this?
LJ, I think that's slide three or slide two. Yeah, but this was back in 2013, 2014. So staff is recreating what was the thought process behind it then, but go back, is that, that's.
I think I hit it too.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
So. Next one, L over LJ. Next one, slide four. The purpose and the need, I think it's not slide four. That was the.
And Director Kirschman's here. I, I may turn this one over to him. This, this is a, this is a project that was originally requested by members of the community and, and I, I don't mean to upset members, there are certain members of the community say, I didn't request it, I understand that, but some members of the community did request the project. It came in, and I don't know, did it come? Yeah. And, and so what, what we would say is that the, there was originally a sidewalk project on Providence that was unable to be constructed due to a lot of financial and physical difficulties. And at that time, when that project was unable to be completed, members of the community, some members of the community reached out and said, well, could we at least get the trail, the unimproved trail, could we have that improved? And that was the genesis behind the project initially. When Parks and Rec gave the project to Public Works for execution, we knew that we had a ditch project in there and we, and we did as we normally would do in trying and maximize the efficacy of the project, minimize our overall costs, and we added the ditch work at that point. When we got to 60% and we, and we reached out to the public and that initial pushback from the community said, wait a minute, you're taking way too many trees. At that time, I directed staff to remove the ditch part from the trail so that there would be no crossover, that people could understand what the tree cost was for just the, the trail project itself. Does that help?
Yeah, because I, I know it's been a long, and when, the longer something takes, not only more expensive, but the more muddled it gets. So, you know, people coming and going and different memories and, and to, and to validate that there are multiple perspectives on this, but for me, it's wanting to drill down to, well, what was the root problem and has that been addressed? And if not, how then do we move forward to ensure that it looks like pedestrian safety for kids? So for Providence Elementary, Timsville Middle and High School, so like where families or children ADA compliant, that's what, that's what I want to keep at the front of my mind when working through this information. How do we ensure that however we move forward, this is, that need still exists? And evidence I have is some of the emails we get, it's people saying, hey, we want to be able to safely pass through to, from Providence to wherever. So I just know there's just been like so much to do, but for me, I just want to go back to the origin point of what got this going and it was safety. So thank you.
Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. LJ, thank you very much. To Councilman Rouse's point, keeping that purpose and need in mind, looking at the consequences, I guess, of returning the grant funds and incurring an additional 50?
Yes, sir.
And you kind of alluded to that, like, you know, that, that was much more significant than what we're kind of saddled with now with 40 points. But I, I'm looking at it from a purpose and need and safety, not just for this project, but for citywide, like citywide needs. And, and I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if you can maybe articulate a little bit what the downside is, how competitive are these TAP grants? How much funding is available? What other sources of revenue would we have otherwise available if we had to sit out for five years? Would we have to sit out for five years or we just score poorly, but because they're so competitive, we, we don't have a hope or prayer of getting the grant for a city that we all know needs sidewalks and pedestrian safety measures in many, many places?
So the TAP programs, TAP stands for Transportation Alternatives. And it is a very competitive program. It, it, it is not the only program that goes into, to funding transportation alternatives like sidewalks and trails. However, some changes have recently been made to things like SmartScales. SmartScale used to be able to fund some large scale trail projects, but with modifications to the SmartScale program, they're removing trails and those types of projects. TAP projects are traditionally sidewalks and trails that connect communities. So if you had a sidewalk that was in your neighborhood, a, a neighborhood came to the city and said, hey, we'd like a sidewalk in our neighborhood, we would typically not apply for a TAP grant for that because it doesn't connect to communities. That's what the Transportation Alternative Program is designed to do. But where the TAP program is really good is for communities where, or for these types of multimodal projects that connect different communities. Virginia Beach Trail comes to mind, right? That's a perfect candidate for TAP. Some of the other regional trails that we have are really good candidates for TAP. If the project is strong, you can survive a 50-point deficit. 90 points is tough. At 90 out of 250, that's a lot of points. But I don't think that it means we would have to sit out. I just, it just means we'd have to have a very, very strong project and capture the remaining, the remaining points that are there. But I think it would be very hard to get a local sidewalk with a 90-point deficit. Did I answer your question completely? Okay.
Michael, and then Chris.
Thank you. Well, I've stated previously and I'll, I will restate that it causes me some distress that this issue has become so divisive among neighbors in our community, members of which who have different opinions on this topic I have great respect for. I think it's really unfortunate that we find ourselves in this situation. There's a lot of emotion, there's a lot of concern and care and one of the things that I know from the people around the room, to see who is here, people who are in this room and many others who are watching, you know, share a love for our city and a commitment for safety and for the wellbeing and enjoyment of our community. And I'm, I'm really sad that it's divisive and I, and I know that Councilman Hutchinson has been one of those who's experienced the most of that division as well as the participants. It's just really unfortunate and I agree with you that we should have been more proactive on the front end of getting some work, getting the parties together, maybe even with a mediator as you said. I, I don't want to, I hope we don't find ourselves in this situation again, and that's not a critique on your work, please, or anyone's work or the community, but it's, it's sad that we find ourselves in this situation where only one side is gonna get what they want and the other side is gonna get the opposite of what they want and leaving a lot of people unhappy. So having said that, I have, I do have a question, but before that I have a comment and a request. On the issue of the scoring, I would like to have some examples cited of how the scoring has penalized other communities. Following up on what Mr. Schulman has said, I, I don't want this presented as evidence that's meant to be persuasive without an understanding of what the actual real impact is. I, I'd like to know more about the scoring system. I'd like to know more about how other communities that have received demerits have either been approved or not been approved on the basis of the, that scoring metric. I don't think it's fair to inject that, I don't think it's appropriate, let me rephrase that. I do not think it's appropriate to inject this scoring system and demerit system into a conversation without giving us an understanding of how the system actually works and we have not received such an understanding. So I would like a, I would like to receive a very comprehensive explanation of what that system entails and what the, the demerit system actually means in terms of the real life applied impacts. I, I think it's completely unfair to expect us to make a decision based on a system that has not been explained to us. And it's been used as a tool for persuasion in the, in this discussion and, and I don't think it's an appropriate use.
Yes, sir. I think we can provide you with some results of, of previous rounds of TAP and the scoring criteria behind that. Yes, sir.
Thank you. The question I have for you though is in relation to the path, no matter what width, are there any other aspects of the trail that hasn't been described? For example, it's been mentioned to me that there could be lighting and other, other infrastructure, for lack of a better term, that would be included in such a path that would have an impact on the surrounding homes and neighborhoods. Can you speak to that or is this just simply a trail?
It's simply a trail, sir. There's no lighting. There's, there's no other amenities that I'm aware of that are, that are, it's certainly not part of the public works scope now. If, if Parks and Rec was proposing to go back at a later date and do something else, I'm unaware of that.
And, and just following up on the information I'm looking for, I don't know who, who's responsible for getting it to us. I'm sorry, I don't mean to direct it specifically at Patrick or LJ, but, but somebody needs to explain to us what this demerit system actually means before it's used in, in this debate.
Okay, Chris?
Thank you, Mayor. All right. LJ and Michael, how many of these projects pass, since we're talking about the point system, have we identified in the pipeline? I don't need to specific, 20, 30, 5, 2?
Steve is here, our, our Greenway Planner. Steve, do you have a quick answer to that ballpark? How many trail projects are even envisioned?
Well, I mean, it's not just our department. It's also.
It's a shared, we do some, they do some.
Multiple departments have worked with KID, and then dozens, we have conversations from the last hour. Historically, we've submitted about two to five projects, either sidewalks or trail and it's an every other year application cycle.
Could you please repeat what we discussed?
So historically, we apply for through the TAP program, two to five per year. So that's, gives you an idea of how many are out there, but that, that's how many we apply for each year for TAP funding. Every other year, I'm sorry.
So as it relates to Councilman Berluci's point, a 40-point reduction, which is almost, almost 20% of that 250, is significant and you're telling us that's going to impact the two to five sidewalks paths that we've identified that we haven't yet applied for TAP funds? Is that, is that accurate?
Yes, sir. So if, if we're doing two to five, let's, I'll split the, split the baby and say, we'll do three, right? We do three every other year and it, and it would be on the books for five years. That would impact potentially nine projects.
And then to Councilman Hutchinson's point, has City Council seen this non-inclusive list?
No, sir. We bring it to you before we.
You bring, okay, so we don't know right now these nine that could be harmed if our decision.
No. I mean, there are some, there are some stable ones, right? We will, we will apply for trails like the Virginia Beach Trail, right? So you're, you're aware of that project. There are, I'm trying to think off the top of my head, but there are different phases of the Virginia Beach Trail. So we might apply for two or three different phases. And again, that's a very strong applicant. That might survive a 50-point deficit. The ones that I think would get, the ones that I think would hurt are gonna be smaller sidewalks that connect two neighbors.
LJ, I think it's clear to say, these are predominantly projects that council already approved in your CIP or there are things that's been requested but not funded. For example, there are a lot of sidewalks and trails that council members asked for that we couldn't find funding for, so they dropped to the requested but not funded list. These are the ones that we typically try to apply for those things for.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. So that, that helps out. We have nine potentially that could be impacted by this demerit?
I don't know if it's exactly nine, but it's roughly around that number and if they're saying.
And then being that the value proposition was improved pedestrian safety, I know growing up, I walked past unpaid paths in the city all the time, whether it was behind Lynnhaven Middle School or behind FC or, and so if that was the request, it didn't come from council, it came from, you said, the community?
It came from council, right? So it came from the community to the district rep, I think it was council member Dyzel at that time. And then he.
For this project.
Yep, and then they requested it and then council ended up adopting it in the Act of Transportation Plan, whatever it's called back in that time period. And then that gave staff the authorization to proceed with applying for grant funds. Council approved the grant funds in like 2017 or 2016. Then the next year it worked its way into the CIP process, then council adopted the CIP project on it and authorized staff to start this work.
One of the main concerns that we've seen in emails from residents that live along this corridor is the infrastructure and the flooding and that's been a priority of the council. And so I'm trying to see if it's about pedestrian safety and accessibility for these elementary school students. Is there a pathway to leading the infrastructure needs while cleaning up the path to make it somewhat more safe? Because I haven't seen through email or in questions asked, injuries taking place? We haven't had any litigation because of ACL tears or anything? So I understand the safety concern, but I haven't seen evidence that outside of the lighting or just some roots, that we can't do both. And speaking, in replying to some of those emails, it appears they want it cleaner, nicer, but those at the end of the trail don't understand how we could prioritize this above infrastructure flooding.
Yes, sir. So I, I turned it back to the slide on, slide number six and, and again, once we touch the trail and we start a project, that's when, and, and I'll defer to the city attorney's office, but that's when it becomes imperative that the city engage in everything that we need to, to do to make it ADA compliant. So once we start clearing the trails, start trying to improve the trail, that's when the onus is on us to, to try to make it ADA compliant and, and that's.
And I think LJ is important to clarify as well, there is no trail that exists right now. It's just a, it's a path that the citizens walk, right? So we don't maintain it, we don't do anything to it. To LJ's point and what we heard from the Department of Justice, the moment the city touches it, then you're on the hook for bringing it into compliance with ADA. So if we start removing, yep, roots and stuff like that, then we're on the hook for bringing it into in compliance with ADA.
That also include council member or council organizer to clean the path there?
You guys are. I think, let's not talk about that, but I think it might if we touch it with city resources, it might trigger that.
Thank you. Anyone else at this point?
Well, I, I want to say that I've seen, from what I'm looking at, I have seen a great deal of progress in terms of listening to the community and creating these different scenarios. I, I do see that and, and that's important. What I would also say for Mr. Duhaney, in terms of this particular presentation today, how did that come about? Because last time I remember is some time ago and I, and I think, I thought we were kind of settled in terms of our discussions and really listening to both sides of the community. And then just when you think everything is going along, here we go and this has been restarted. So how did this presentation come about today?
City council asked for it in March, 3rd July.
So this was a specific follow-up for today's date?
Yes, council, yeah, we presented to city council, council asked us to follow up and ask. and council asked us to follow up and ask these questions, like, when do we trigger ADA? What are different size options for a trail and the different cost options associated with it?
Also, I have several things listed here, I'll just go through them. For me, it's going to be, number one, the reason that I became involved walking the trails with the residents and talking with them is during the period where we didn't have a representative before council member Hutchinson came about. And so I walked out on the trail, talked to the people there, and then I went to one of the citizen community meetings as well and talked to people on both sides. And one of the things that I'm looking at is, I don't, and I have heard a little bit of it, I don't want it to be the TAP funding going back versus the citizens' needs and their concerns, making a decision based on the money, the TAP money, that's not what I want to make a decision based upon. I do want to make sure that we're providing the citizens what they are asking for. So I, and I understand on the one hand, the purpose is safety as it relates to the slide you just showed. And so, in saying that, are you saying the purpose is tied to people walking on this trail? So they're trying to get to school, they're trying to get to the recreational center, and they're coming through this trail, or path, because it's not a trail. Is that what the purpose is for, or is this a need in terms of safety that's not connected directly to that path? It's surrounding the path?
Council member Woodin, in 2015, 2016, when the city applied for that grant, that's what the stated reasoning why we applied for that grant. And so that is for, to allow the citizens to use the trail to walk to this different recreation centers and the schools and stuff like that.
So the path is being used to walk to the rec center and the schools, and we are seeing children walk to the schools through this path.
I don't know that, but with the improvement, that's what the purpose of what the grant was requested for, to allow the path after it's improved, to allow for that.
So, there is a need from the community to have children and adults walk this path specifically to get to school and to get to the recreational center.
That's what was in the grant at that time when they applied for it.
Okay, so...
Could I say one thing to you there, just to help on this, is that, from my understa...
Because I'm just trying to understand.
Yep, from my understanding, and there's a lot of people in here that know parts of all this, is that when Chief Dyzel was sitting here, and it came up about the sidewalks on Providence Road and the children standing there, and to this day, you can go, right now, this morning, and you could see him standing on Providence and Orkney and Providence and Flowbert, they're standing there, number of children. I have talked to a couple people in the gallery about, could we do something with that so that the school bus could, because we have the saying in the fire department, if it's predictable, it's preventable. It doesn't mean we've had it happen yet, but there could be somebody that's going to drive into a bunch of kids at the corner. They're that close to Providence Road, they're all over top of it. So we thought, well, if we could do some improvements, whatever that meant, then could we have the bus turn down there and pick them up every couple of streets and have them walk through the path to get there? My understanding is that might be happening now, but I'm with Patrick. I'm by no means saying it has, because I haven't run that to ground. But that's where it's come from.
And that's good information, it helped me connect the dots here and the importance of opening up this path that's been private for many years, to now open it up to more residents who don't live on the path. So that's important for me to understand, as well as the people who live on the path. Because I hear a lot from the people who live on the path. I do hear from people who don't live directly on the path. And so there is going to be a significant impact for those folks. Because if you're opening it up, their concern also is, hey, there are AVs that are going to start coming down here and other maybe motor vehicles or what have you, because they've already tried. And so now, opening it up more, having this eight-foot path with asphalt, for them is a concern, and how is that going to impact them? Because they live right there. And so, that is the main concern that I hear a lot about their well-being. And then trees being taken down close to people's property. And, you know, we talk about preserving trees. We have whole program to, for tree canopy and investing all this money in trees. And then here we go, now looking at, you know, taking down quite a few trees that actually help with flood mitigation. And so often, you know, I'm hearing from the residents, you know, we want to keep the trees and preserve them as much as possible. And I understand that there's been some reduction in some of the trees in terms of taking them down, and I think that's important to note. But still, for residents that I'm hearing from, you know, that is a main concern. Trees help with flood mitigation. And every part of the area, there is some flooding, but it's not as much and throughout the neighborhood as some people may think. There are certain specific areas that there is flooding more so than others from what I hear. And so, and then looking at the TAP funding and the percentage points, so we have 40, negative 40 points now. How do we get there?
The 40 points deductions that we currently receive as a result of not delivering projects on the timeline that we scoped.
And so, I think we've talked about this before too, with projects regarding traffic projects and how sometimes, and I don't have any specific data, but sometimes maybe there is a thought or a strategy or a plan to do something, but then perhaps the residents have not been really integrated and engaged in what's going on. But we're moving on this path, we're moving forward with the project, asking for the funding. However, we really haven't mitigated all of the circumstances, which may cause a change in delay in the project. But probably what we should have done is engage the community first before we ask for the funding, and I know there are timelines. And, you know, you have to do things in a certain period, I get that. But I think what I'm seeing here, and sometimes what I'm seeing also with other projects, is the community hasn't been fully engaged, mitigating circumstances haven't been fully mitigated, and then we find ourselves in a position where we've already been through the process of asking for these funds to do the work, but we're being slowed down because now the community is saying, hey, we didn't know this. We didn't know how much it was going to cost, we didn't know all the details. And then you have to be delayed and go back and mitigate that. And so, what I'm hearing and what I've observed is that we... And in this particular instance too, has been brought up, you know, the community, number one, says, and I have an email here that says, hey, when some of those, you know, votes were taken, we didn't know all that was involved in this project. We didn't find out until later. And then also looking at the fact that the community has changed since 2013. There are folks who are, are now, who weren't there are there now and say, we don't want it now, we know what happened in 2013, but now our neighborhood has changed, the people have changed, residents have changed there. And so, now there's a different group of people there that perhaps we may not have fully engaged in this project. And so now you're hearing a lot of concerns and feedback from them as well. And that's based on what I'm hearing. And, let's see, I have some other comments here. Well, this last point leads to another point that resident brought up. You know, we, especially in controversial projects, and one like this, and even if this moves forward, there really should be, you know, a committee and a group of folks, or at least a resident-friendly group who are able to, as this project is going along, provide that input and be fully engaged, because they want that. They want a forum in which they can be a part of as this is happening to their neighborhood, specifically the folks on that trail. They want to be a part of this going forward and, you know, in major changes. They want to walk through that. And so having a commission like that for residents, or committee, or whatever you want to call it, is important now, and it's important in controversial projects and other projects that really impact people's neighborhoods. It shouldn't be after the fact. This is something that folks, if they want to be fully engaged in, they should have an opportunity. There should be a venue for them to do so, so that they can feel confident that their voice is being heard. And they don't feel that things have been left out, and they don't know really what's going on. So the other part is, how much is this going to cost the taxpayers?
I'm not sure I understand the question, how much is what going to cost taxpayers?
How much is the project, do you want to build a trail, flood mitigation? Now, let me preface this for you. So my understanding was, the community said, when there was information put out about the project, there was not a fully, they did not know fully how much it would cost the taxpayers. That detail was left out. And I think in previous presentations, it was said, the full amount, the cost for the taxpayers was not on the website. And so, is that detail on the website? Do we know...
Yes, ma'am.
How much that's going to cost the taxpayers? So if they pull it up, and they say, well, how much is this going to cost me? Because I'm paying taxes.
Yes, ma'am.
Can they locate it?
Yes, ma'am, it is on the website.
How much is it?
Currently projected to be a $1.6 million project. It has not gone out to bid, but it is currently projected to be a $1.6 million project. The original scope, if you recall from my, earlier in my presentation, did include a ditch part. So the number has changed some, because we took the ditch maintenance part out.
Okay, and that was a major concern for them, that they were not fully aware of the actual cost. And I think council member Hutchinson did mention that before votes were taken. They didn't know that, and so some may have been in agreement with it previously, but when that major detail came out, then they were not. And so that's important to know, how much are the taxpayers paying? The slide number nine. So going to slide number nine, what I'm also hearing from people, if this is something you want to do, can we do it in the most environmental-friendly way? Or in terms of the surface that you're going to use? And so that's something, you know, I know, you know, we have that asphalt and chip seal and so on and so on, but looking at the most environmental-friendly is important to residents, especially those who live on the trail. And so I don't know how we determine that, or have we determined? What's the most environmental-friendly? And in that same vein, when we look at flooding, we know there are some surfaces that help mitigate flooding. And so are we looking, since there's an issue with mitigating flooding, are we looking at the best surface to use that will absorb the water instead of cause more of a flooding issue for the trail?
So the, in terms of what's the most environmentally friendly, I think you could probably get a panel of experts in here, and they would debate that for a week. The FlexiPave solution, which is the most cost inefficient solution, might be seen by some to be environmentally friendly, because it can go over the tops of roots, and it does allow water to get through it. However, it is a carbon-based solution, and some people might not consider that to be environmentally friendly. The stone dust and organic lock stabilized stone are not, they're not petroleum-based products. However, they will have some measure of dust that's going to run off. And so that could affect things like alkalinity, pH, and it would change some of the surrounding soil conditions. So again, it's very difficult to put a finger on what is the most environmentally friendly. It depends on what you're looking at in the environment. And so I just, I want to see full disclosure.
So do we have any research on that at all? Because this is one of the major concerns for some of the citizens.
Yes, ma'am, and that's what I'm conveying to you, is we've looked at those things, but it all depends upon what direction that council and the community would have us go. Our concerns are fiduciary, we're worried about how much this is going to cost in the long haul. We're worried about what the overall impact to the environment is in terms of removing trees and the other elements that are at place. At this point, and you saw the matrix, we're recommending the hot mix asphalt. We believe that to be the best solution for this project.
And so for the residents who live on the trail, has that information been provided for them? Can they go look it up? So when I talk to them and I say, hey, the city has done their research on the most environmental-friendly surface, where can I point them for that information?
This presentation identifies the different materials that we looked at. We did not print out or take that material and put it someplace. It would be very difficult for us to do that, because in part, some of it is copyrighted. Putting it on the city's webpage could cause us some issues. I don't know if we could get the product data sheets to comply with the ADA, which would cause us problems in terms of the Department of Justice and our requirements to make sure that our website is ADA compliant. However, you can see the list of materials that are here, and any member of the community is free to investigate whatever aspects that they would like to do. But no, we have not put it in a specific place that they could evaluate the environmental efficacy or the environmental nature of any one of these particular products.
Right, so the community is free to do their own research on this, okay? Also, in terms of, if we had maybe a community, a resident group or committee, and that is their focal point, can we have someone sit down, talk with them, and help walk them through how you came up with your recommendation?
Yes, ma'am, we've met with members of the community many times, we'll continue to do so.
So when I talk with them and I say, listen, your concern is about the environmental friendliness of the surface, let's schedule a meeting so you can have all your questions answered about that, and the best, the best option that the city has come up with, they'll tell you why.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, I'm coming to a close. All right, so how about, this is a point that I also bring up, and then the last point. Prior to the last point, I will say, from what I'm hearing, and there is an option there to just clean it up, clean up the path. And that's something that certainly a lot of folks who live there want, just clean it up. Do we know, you know, if that is something folks want and say that is what's suggested by the body, are we able to go ahead and clean it up? But I understand there, it has to be ADA compliant if you put your hands on it.
Councilmember Woodin, if we touch that trail, we got to do some version of what's on this table here.
Okay.
Right, so we can't just go in there and clean it up without triggering some kind of construction, which then leads towards the situation that we're in right now.
So, the path cannot be cleaned up, the staff cannot put their hands on the path without triggering one of these options, correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you for that. Finally, I will say, from what I understand, there is a petition that's out there. I don't know if it's been sent to the rest of the members on council, I'm happy to send it to you. 27 people on the petition, who, folks who live on the path, are against the project, are against paving the path, they've sent that to me. Then there's a link for a larger survey, has 178 signatures opposing the paving of the path. There's 178 signatures opposing the paving of the path. It's not against flood mitigation. They are for that and that is a priority. But they are saying in their petition, with 27 residents who live on the path, that they oppose paving the path. And then the 178 signatures in the link, again, they oppose paving the path. Not, they're not against flood mitigation. Thank you.
Good, Barbara.
Complete, before I start talking.
I'm done.
Well, I guess out of the one, others of you two have been here since 2013 and we have spent hundreds of hours on this particular project. And I can't imagine anybody living in that neighborhood not knowing that the project is there and has been there and has had many public hearings and public meetings. But as I recall, it all started with safety and Providence Road. And anybody who knows Providence Road knows that that's not our best road in the city. And to be able to put sidewalks along that road would be not something that we can do. And that's what was the genesis of all of this, was the safety. And here we are, over 10 years later, we still haven't gotten this resolved to make it safe for those kids and other people who need to get to the schools and facilities. And I think we really get bogged down into these other things. If it had been built 10 years ago, it would probably be not a problem for anybody today. I look at West Neck Road, which is one of our new roads. A very rural area for many years, but it's got these wonderful sidewalks now. They're off-site trails and I cannot tell you how used that is. And yes, it took down a lot of trees, but those sidewalks in there, those off-road trails, but they are so utilized and you hardly even notice it, even riding along. And I just hope people will think in terms of the safety issues and what this was originally designed for because Providence Road is just not an acceptable road that we could go out and do something with very quickly. So this was, seemed to be available and so forth and it's, but it was that issue with Providence Road that started it and Providence Road is no better today and is certainly no safer. And I think it's time we get on with the safety issue.
Anyone else at this point? What you got a direction for as a recommendation? That's why we're thinking about.
Well, I think, I think knowing what we've heard from everybody, what I've heard and outside of chambers here and everything else, that this is moving forward.
You want to go to the last slide? Do you want me to kind of restate where it is?
Yeah, it'd be probably helpful.
Yeah. So council, this is an approved CIP project, right? Council already approved the plan, approved the grant, approved the project, authorized the project, appropriated the funding. In keeping with what we traditionally do, when we get to this stage where we need to get the land easements or acquisition of authority to take property or to get access to property through agreement or condemnation, the next step is to bring legislation forward for council to take up and authorize us to do that. That's what we propose to do here. Anything else other than that would be council giving us direction to do something different than what we traditionally do with our CIP projects. So this is what we're proposing to do from a next step standpoint. A public hearing on December 3rd and then also for you to consider ordinance for, allow us to access the properties via agreement or condemnation on December 10th.
Okay. Hutchinson, do you have a problem with that?
No. I just had a quick question. Based on the width of the path, that will determine the scope of the easements required, right? So do we have to, do we have to work that before?
That's already worked out. So what staff is bringing forward is the plan that was already approved. Yep. And basically, once you get from five to eight feet or three to eight feet, you're taking the same amount of properties because it's not the trail size per se, it's the getting the equipment in there to do the work.
Okay, Michael.
I, I want to go back to this demerit system, not to get stuck on it, but I am stuck on it. I think we need to understand, so I'm going to, I'm just going to focus my comments on that and then we'll, we'll address the next steps, but it's really important to me. I want to make this decision based on the merit of the project, not based on whether or not we're going to get demerits. And I, to the extent that that was used in this conversation, for me personally, I don't appreciate that. I want, A, to repeat my request for more understanding of that system because it's the first time I've ever heard of it in relation to this conversation, these demerits. I'm also confused and a little frustrated about why we were not notified that we received demerits or given an opportunity to address if it was for delays. Was there anything that we could have done to address that concern? Because now we're looking not at 50 demerits, we're looking at 90 demerits based on the fact that we have 40. And I don't, I hope no one here takes offense to that. It's not, things happen. But if this is that big of a deal, then we should have been notified and we should have been presented options to mitigate that impact or to remedy that before receiving those demerits. And in the future, I really would like to make sure that we focus our conversations based on the merits of the project and not based on penalties that we do not, do not understand and have not been articulated clearly.
So, Councilman, it was not the intent of staff to use the demerits to bias this body in any way, shape or form. It is part of the overall discussion, just as the width is and everything else. We wanted to make sure that this body understood all of the consequences for any rationale that was chosen and we did not use it as a, as a means to sway the conversation. The 40 demerits really go back to events after 531, the fact that we had staff that were relocated, then we went, rolled into the pandemic. It was not a time of great efficiency in the Department of Public Works at being able to execute projects. I'm not making excuses. You asked and I'm answering the question. We do have the 40, the 40-point deduction. It is not something that we're, that we're proud of, but we are working with the City Manager's Office and VDOT to correct it to make sure that we don't have additional deductions. We have some other projects that are up against timelines that we're working very hard to make sure that they don't, that they don't fall into, into a problem with.
I just want to note in addition, and I appreciate that answer, Mr. Hanson, I want to note in addition that the state participation, the grant participation is very small relative to the overall scope of the project. And it's the city of Virginia Beach taxpayers who are paying the bulk of this fee and expense and we should be accountable and responsive to their desires, to their requests, to their concerns, many that articulated by Ms. Wooden and I give her credit for that, and not to, you know, a demerit system that we don't even know about until this project came up. So I want to do better with that in the future.
Josh and Jennifer.
And just, Mr. Mayor and LJ and I also brought up that topic and I don't want you to feel as though, or anybody else to feel as though, similar to Mr. Hanson, that I had mentioned any of that for any, any other reason than, you know, a long time ago, what was it, 10, 10-plus years ago, this project started? Neighborhood had a request, went through the process, grant was applied for, design was made and, you know, we're, if we're, and I understand things change and people may change in preferences and things, but if we're going to have any integrity whatsoever to our CIP going through time, you know, anything that you or I or any of us work on today, that we know that our neighborhood really wants, only 10 years from now to have something come up where we'll end up talking 45 minutes about a sidewalk. And, you know, I just, I think that, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be dismissive by any means of those concerns, but, but like, we have, we have to guard and we have to accomplish our CIP projects. And, and also, I mean, if, if there is a negative impact by virtue of these demerits, and we'll find out more about them, that is a, that's a city-wide impact that, that impacts everybody, all of us. And, and I think that that's something that I think we, in a, in a district system, I mean, we obviously have our, have our objectives and priorities in our district, but, but if we're going to want to work together as a body and think outside of just these 10 districts, we've got to consider how decisions in our, in our districts impact the city as a whole. And that was my, my point in terms of.
Okay, Jen.
I'll be quick. So I have, working in a state institution, I can't say, I'm not going to speak to the purpose of this demerit process, but I understand it in terms of a rubric. So whenever there's public dollars in order to prevent or avoid bias in decision-making, you've got a decision-making matrix. How to award, how to withhold awards, and then how to keep people accountable for how they're using those awards. So I can see the demerit system, like to me, it just is very practical in terms of if public dollars are going to be used on a project, you have to do the project. And if you don't, you will be penalized and we, and therefore lose either credibility or legitimacy to receive more public dollars because you don't have a track record of completing what you said you were going to do. So that's how I interpreted it. I didn't see it as a, it just makes sense to me because it's publicly funded and we're so slow. So I can't believe this has been this long of, from, we had the funding and then the longer it takes, the more expensive it gets. And then we wait and then, and one of my biggest, maybe complaint since being here is how long it takes to finish anything. So this is something that has been, you know, again, previous councils and things change and I understand that. But to bring it full circle back to one of the functions of government and public safety, and this to me is a safety issue, and however we decide to vote is how we decide to vote, but it's just been so drawn out and the longer we do this, the more expensive it gets. With the demerit system, I can see Virginia Beach, if VDOT awards the grants to Hampton Roads, Virginia Beach is a really big city. I can see that the demerit system is a way to say, well, we don't privilege anybody over anyone else. So it's not who we know on council, it's not because the city has this much, it's either you meet the standard or you don't. And it sounds like we, what we all know is that we don't do stuff on time. So we got hit for it. And I would like for us to take that as a, as a nudge to say, when we say, when we commit public dollars to something and we commit to a timeline, why can't we finish it?
I'll say that is a very nuanced conversation and LJ and I have been having that same conversation with VDOT because these things happened before him and I got here and we're not used to this particular way of contracting. But I would say a lot of that is miscommunication from VDOT to the city. And basically, how the city operates is we get a grant and then we don't move until we get all the project money funded before we execute a contract. There are other ways of doing that. VDOT tried to convince us to move in a way of start the work without getting the money fully secured from VDOT or appropriating the funds. The city tried that one time with, what was the name of that project?
Lesnar Bridge.
Lesnar Bridge. And then VDOT ran out of money, it didn't have money and the city had to then pull from its own resources to fund that gap. So I think since that time, we've been really cautious on that because it doesn't necessarily seem that they're going to be there for us when we need them at times. We are looking at projects now to see what projects does it make sense to move in that direction from where we can take more of a risk, because it looks like other communities do that as well. And some of these things may require a code change from the city council. We're evaluating that with the city attorney's office right now. But I would say there seems to be some legislative complications with that and also seems to be some in practice when those things have happened before, the city got penalized and had to find money from its own resources to cover a hole that was created from VDOT.
Okay, Michael.
And I don't want to go around and around on this, but A, again, I want to make a decision point based on the needs of our city today and for the future. And I don't want to be held, I want to, let's, let's get to the bottom of it. We're talking about a $300,000 grant on a $1.6 million City of Virginia Beach taxpayer investment. So we should not be held hostage over, you know, the, the people of Virginia Beach who are funding the project have a right to participate in discussions about what type of project they want to see in their neighborhood, in their backyard. And I've heard from people on both sides I greatly respect, so I'm not taking a position on this particular project. I'm taking a position on how this process unfolded. And with great respect and deference to my, my very good friend, Mr. Schulman, a project that was included in the CIP 10 years ago, community needs may have changed since then. Or, as Ms. Wooden pointed out, maybe not everyone in the community was able or knew to participate in the discussion. So we can't, I don't, and I don't know if this is exactly what you meant, but we can't look at the CIP book and see what was placed in there 10 years ago by previously elected officials and people that don't work here anymore and make a commitment that that's what we're going to fulfill today. Because the, and I don't think that's what you were saying because I know you, but that's what it sounded like to me from where I was sitting. And, and I just, I'm really concerned about that aspect of this conversation. And for me, and again, and I respect and understand what Mrs. Rouse was saying about the metrics and, and this, you know, in this, this rubrics and systems that the state uses. The system that I use is accountability to the taxpayers of the City of Virginia Beach. And I want to make sure that they have fulfillment in participation.
Okay, at this point, you know, we've got to bring this project to some kind of decision point. It's been lingering too much. Does anybody really object to Mr. DeHennys to at least move forward with the public hearings and get the process moving? And that way we will get input from various sites and, and we will make the decision based on, once again, we have the thing where our number one priority as a council is stormwater. Okay, that is our highest priority and also safety. But once again, let's bring the discussion forward and we, we have to resolve this one way or the other. Anybody standing forward? Okay, Patrick.
All right. Mr. Mayor, members of council, we'll now pivot towards giving city council an overview of the items that will come up as part of your CIP retreat. We'll first have an initial reintroduction of what the goals are of the CIP retreat by Kevin Chadelair before we go into the briefings from the IT, the information technology team and then also from our coastal team. So Kevin will take a couple of slides to kind of reorient council on why are we here and why we're doing the CIP retreat again.
I think we've got a transition going on here. Hey, LJ. You too. Hey, folks, at this point, why don't we just take a five-minute break? You know, a quick break. We've been sitting here for a bit. I know five minutes is ambitious. Okay, let's take a break. I know five, uh, minutes is ambitious. Okay, let's take a break.
In order, and we have another presentation, Mr. DeHany.
So. So, Mr. Mayor, before you took the recess, I mentioned I was gonna have Kevin come back up and reorient council on the purpose and what we're trying to achieve as part of the CIP retreat. Then following that, we're gonna have briefings from the IT department about the IT section and then the coastal section. Knowing that we need to get back on track on time, Mayor, I'm gonna see if we can possibly just give you a quick overview of it and skip some of the detailed summary details. They're available to the city council in this packet. If council has any questions, please feel free to reach out and we can provide you more detailed information separately in a one-off meeting if necessary. But trying to get you back on agenda, we'll give you a quick overview of the IT and the coastal presentation after Kevin gives you a quick synopsis of why we're here and what our goals are for the CIP retreat. Kevin.
Let's go ahead and do that.
Yes, sir. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, thank you, Mr. Manager. Um, so, Mayor, I'm gonna move through this quickly. Uh, a few weeks ago, I was before city council and you might recall this graphic and presentation provided where this is basically a reflection of inflation and the impacts it's having on the CIP as well as the overall construction market. This is just one of many factors that are putting a constraint on the CIP and the programming of resources and fully funding all the CIP projects that we have. So another slide that I mentioned to try to help city council in this, um, in this pre-briefing, uh, the series of pre-briefs are going to be coming before you ahead of the retreat, trying to take what's a $5.5 billion CIP and get it down into a digestible format. So working from this slide, uh, we then drilled down and looked at the annual, the yearly allocation of the CIP. And whenever a lot of those grant obligations and the other revenue streams that make up the CIP, it came down to this narrowed down $102 million of really general fund resources that several sections are competing for, um, on an annual basis. So this slide is just a recap of those sections that are competing for the general fund resources. Um, and so you might, this might be referred to in some of the briefings as, um, funding being allocated to projects that have local flexibility. Uh, so these six sections are the ones that we're packaging and getting before city council in this series of briefing. So the most recent one, uh, was the Department of Parks and Recs. I'm gonna skip through this real quick. Um, and so this is a recap really of the, um, projects that were prevented or provided to city council as a part of that briefing. So kind of quickly walking across the format of this graph because, or this slide, because this is how the information will be captured and provided to city council as well as the Fountain Works consultants, um, in, to help guide your conversations with them ahead of the retreat. Uh, so the first column there is just a reflection of the projects themselves. The second column is the funding source, so kind of working across the top, the bikeways and trails repair project. Um, it's a maintenance-oriented project. It's funded by the general fund. And then that column, local ATDs, um, so acronym. Um, ATDs stands for appropriations to date, meaning the funds that were previously provided to the project to date and are readily available, um, or balance on the project. Uh, the FY '26 and then the FY '27 through '30, that's just the program funding, if there is any, um, in the most recently adopted CIP. And then the next column I really wanna draw your attention to is that last column with the acronym BTC. That stands for balance to complete. So sticking with that one across the top, um, there could be a proposal or request coming forward in the upcoming CIP, as it was mentioned by Parks and Rec, for an additional $2.5 million to fully fund that project that keep them on track with their maintenance of bikeways and trails, um, throughout the city. So this is just a recap of the projects that had been referenced, um, in a combination of either locally funded with flexibility or some of the projects with a balance to complete. And really the purpose of this and compiling these is not to think about this as a prioritization exercise of some of these to go away or some of them, um, to, to be funded or additional resources put towards them ahead of the retreat. That's not what we're really asking. What we're really asking is just for city council to look at these projects with the mindset and be thinking, okay, are, do these projects remain to be the top priorities, um, as from what I'm hearing? Should these be the focus areas that we give direction of staff as, um, these projects clearly have some funding gaps on them? How, whatever the direction is from council, we would like to capture that, um, with use, through use of the consultant and get feedback for the open conversation at the retreat that we can then take that feedback in the development of the city manager's proposed budget. So again, it's not a, um, projects on that list are not necessarily not important. They all have a purpose and intent and they're all important. Um, but we just need some help prioritizing these as we allocate those limited resources. Um, the last slide here, uh, is just the new projects that were previously briefed by Parks and Rec and they mentioned as part of the presentation. So for context, um, throughout the total Parks and Rec section, there's likely, um, going to be a request or a balance to complete being reported in the CIP document of about $200.5 million for that one section. So I know I moved through that very quickly and I apologize. Um, I wanted to go into a few more details, but I think I'm going to turn it over now if it's okay with Parks and Rec, um, excuse me, I'm sorry, IT, to see if we can, uh, get their presentation moving along.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Andre Jenkins and I am the IT, um, business architect for the IT department and I'm going to give you just a brief overview of our CIP section this afternoon. So as I work through this presentation, please note that about 95% of our CIPs are for our Virginia Beach departments, uh, or as I like to call them, our customers. The IT department exists for one reason and we exist to be able to serve our customers, to enable them to serve the residents, tourists, businesses and, uh, and citizens of our city. For FY '24 through FY '25, we have 28 adopted CIP projects totaling $233 million. And, and that includes appropriations to date and we have three funding sources. What I do wanna say is that our, um, our project totals represent about 4% of the CIP over, of the overall CIP program and we support 100% of the Virginia Beach departments. So as far as the funding sources, we have 26 projects and programs that come from, uh, the general fund. And we distinguish our projects and programs. We consider, uh, projects as implementing new technology for, and our projects have, uh, clearly defined start and end date. And our programs are designed to maintain and improve our current technology through routine maintenance and upgrades. We also have one federal contribution and a franchise fee. So the cable access infrastructure replacement, that is a CIP that is paid for by resident cable TV subscriptions and, uh, on Cox and Verizon bills. And this CIP addresses the public education and government cable channel equipment needs. The EOC modernization, or you can also, uh, it's also called the, um, Emergency Operations Center modernization. This CIP is based on federal funds that were awarded by the emergency, awarded to the emergency management. And what we're doing with this CIP is we're expanding the capabilities of the EOC by increasing the technology used, um, at the various sites whenever an incident occurs. We're also increasing our emergency response capability and business continuity by having multiple sites, uh, or multiple locations for incident activation. We have six general fund projects with no changes and there is a $6 million and $6 million in total funding. We have four general fund programs with no changing and there is $36 million in total funding. We also have three general fund projects and programs with changes that we're going to be requesting this year. And there is $107 million in total funding and we have a $49 million balance to complete. And these are our locally funded projects with flexibility. We have 13 of these projects. There is $77 million in funding for these projects and programs and we have a balance to complete, um, of $19 million. And so in the handouts that you have, you have, um, a listing of each one of these projects and we're just gonna skip through that so we can get on with this presentation. Again, if you have any questions, just contact, um, us and we will make sure we get the answers to your questions. So this slide shows, uh, the increased request that we will be submitting for FY '26. We have seven projects and programs that are currently funded, um, currently funded at $172 million and there is a $69 million balance to complete for these project, projects and programs. And our customers have, are going to be requesting for FY '26 18 new projects and programs. And that's what you see on this list now. So our customers are requesting $16 million in program funds with a $22 million balance to complete. Over the years, our customers have increased their number of requests and I believe there is a strong desire to use technology to increase their current capabilities and maximize our operational efficiency. So this afternoon, what we wanted to do was give a high overview of our IT section and we attempted to communicate that we don't exist for ourselves or for the sake of technology. The IT department exists to serve every other department in Virginia Beach and we enable all of our customers to serve the residents, tourists and businesses of our city. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Any, uh, questions or concerns? You know, thank you very much. You play a vital part in it getting more complex as we get open, uh, go forward and, uh, you know, cybersecurity is a major thing, but thank you for what you do.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, before coastal comes up, um, just note, I know we have to rush through this to get you guys back on schedule. If there's any questions, feel free to reach out to me or Kevin. We could set up a one-off meeting with the different sections so that you all can get up to speed with those as well.
I appreciate that.
So Mr. Mayor, members of council, you'll be hearing from Jim White, who is with the Coastal Division of Public Works and he's gonna go over the coastal CIP. It's gonna be a similar cadence to what we did with IT. We're gonna give you a quick overview and then skip some of the details. But again, council, if you need some additional information, please feel free to reach out.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, my name is James White. Um, I'm actually the acting, um, program administrator for the, um, Public Works Coastal Engineering Section. Um, pleased to present the coastal section CIP budget proposal for FY '26. And I'll try to move through it fairly quickly. Uh, the coastal CIP addresses the critical need for shore protection and safe navigation. Uh, and in our, um, we had 26 projects totaling $206 million, including appropriations to date in the FY, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, guys. Um, in the FY '25 adopted CIP, that's further broken down into the beach replenishment and, uh, accessways, navigation dredging, uh, and neighborhood navigation dredging program. Our funding sources are three types of forces, uh, sources of special service districts, uh, general fund, uh, for federal cost shares and the general fund itself. Um, first up, we'll go through, uh, the special service districts, um, which we have 11 programs and projects total, um, where the funding source is a special service district, um, through, uh, adoption. Uh, and then, and, um, so there are eight SS, uh, neighborhood SSDs, um, that we oversee. And then on this page, we go to the, uh, Sandbridge Beach Federal Shore Protection Project, which is also funded through an SSD, um, tax structure. And it also includes the, uh, beach access improvements in Sandbridge Beach. Um, that is a total, um, program funding, um, is 70 million for the SSD program. Sandbridge Beach. That is a total program funding is 70 million for the SSD program. Next up is our general fund projects with a federal cost share and that is, although we got 15 general fund, fund projects overall, these first three are programs with level funding for the city cost share for a federal protection project, a resort beach, and then of course, our navigation dredging programs at Lynn Haven and Rudy Inlet. The total for our, the funding program for the next six years is 47 million. And then now getting into general fund projects where we've got four projects that have funding encumbered, that are funds encumbered to complete design, construction or equipment acquisition phase for the project. After that's followed by three programs that provide level funding, city level funding for shore protection at Croatan Beach, navigation at Rudy Inlet and in the various minor dredging throughout the city. Also, we have a program, there's a program that is for neighborhood, that supports neighborhood dredging that is through the, for the SSD programs called the City Spur Dredging. And finally, the final four projects that have funding that are earmarked for future projects, oops, let me get there, for within the next six-year cycle and they, they have a total combined program budget of 112, or the total for general funds projects is 122 million. Now, moving on and I'll do similar to IT, that we have eight locally funded projects in the general fund with flexibility. And again, I'll, we can go ahead. If you have any questions on any of these projects, feel free to reach out to our office.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
And, and so, want to get to, yeah.
We're all wrapped up. Thank you, Jeff.
Okay.
At this point, any discussions or initiatives or comments or anything?
Since Dr. Ross Hammond's not here, I wanted to give a shout out to her for the Beechwood sign that they put out on Sunday that you were there, Mr. Mayor, and Josh was there. And it was a beautiful, lovely, it was really a wonderful ceremony and the neighborhood and the people there were just extraordinarily excited and appreciative and so happy to be recognized. And Dr. Ross Hammond did a fantastic job in presenting it. And there were some great things said about our colleague, Josh Omen, was definitely highlighted very nicely from there. So, I just, since Millie is not here to talk about it, I wanted to say something.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anyone else? Uh, word. Okay, then Josh.
I have my seventh District 6 community meeting Thursday night, November 21st at the Museum of Contemporary Art, Moca, doors open at 6:00. Meeting starts at 6:30.
Okay. Thank you, Josh.
Quickly, I had my town hall last week. Wanted to say, just went on to Deputy Drew Langford and all the staff who came on presentations. And then I just, I took part in something last night. I just want to share with all of you, the Jewish community has a book festival and they highlighted and brought into Virginia Beach an author who wrote a book called The Art of Diplomacy. I got to facilitate a conversation with this gentleman who was the former ambassador, United, US Ambassador to the EU, undersecretary of State and Deputy Treasury Secretary, served in six administrations. So, it was really, really a fantastic experience and I made sure that he felt welcome from, from you, Mr. Mayor and from the council. And it was a fantastic evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay, how about, is consent agenda placed?
I think it's going to be a good one. There's only one speaker on this side of the planning of the Catholic diocese. So, is that a pro or a con?
Yes.
Pardon me?
Speaker's against.
Perfect.
We need to pull that. Want to pull it?
If the speaker is opposed.
Speaker, don't we?
No, it depends. Oh, we can hear, you know.
It's up to you.
We can pass it on consent and still hear the speaker.
Well, that, that sounds like we're not really listening. I'd rather pull it.
Okay.
All right. Well, we, all right. So, under ordinances, resolutions, does anybody have any issues with anything there when they all go on consent?
Okay, good to go.
And then under planning, number one will be pulled and number two, which is to adopt and incorporate into the Virginia Beach comprehensive plan, the local road safety action plan, which is very important for us to pass that tonight. And Mr. Duhany, did you want to say something about that one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, yes, Vice Mayor and my, my city council, Mr. Mayor. That one is needed. We briefed city council two times and then we went to the planning commission and we had a public engagement separate apart from the planning commission and we briefed council again. This one is critical because it's a new requirement that our federal funding partners are requiring for us in order to unlock federal funding for transportation projects, in particular pedestrian and, and like traffic enforcement like projects. So, if we don't adopt this one, this makes us less competitive and less likely to receive federal funds.
Is it all right for everybody to put that on consent?
Yes, I would just like to comment on that. I know that we did a lot of work, public input and so forth in developing this, but with it being in the comprehensive plan, I hope we'll be able to just refer to the people who, I noticed there, there was, there was a fatality, I believe, last week. And, you know, we, when we read the articles and hear from people, they say, well, we knew that was a, a bad intersection. Something should have been done a long time ago. Or I'm hearing a lot about intersections and I'm one of the big complainers, especially if the lines aren't like they ought to be or something. But the ability of, of our people to talk about these things during the comprehensive plan update, I guess, would be something that we can tell them they can still speak to if, because I think if, if a neighborhood feels that there is a definite problem, we really need to hear from the people because they're the ones who can, who know it the most. And I really hate reading that, well, we knew there was something here. These people wouldn't even use that road. And anyway, if our people know the problems, this would be an opportunity for them to again, address it.
Okay, thank you, Barbara. Okay.
Okay.
All right. The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meeting allowed by Section 2.237 11A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes. Publicly held property, discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property for public purpose or the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A3 and that would be District 3. And public contract, discussion or award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussion, the terms of the scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining positions or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237, Section 11A29. Project football and personal matters discussions, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A2. And that would be council appointments for boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies and appointees. Do I have a motion? Second.
Councilor Volage?
Aye.
Councilor Henry?
Aye.
Councilor Hodgson?
Aye.
Councilor Ruman?
Aye.
Councilor Ross?
Aye.
Councilor Shulman?
Aye.
Councilor Taylor?
Aye.
Councilor Moody?
Aye.
Chair Wilson?
Aye. Okay, we are recessed into closed.